Good, good to go. Alright, good evening. I'm Paul Concomiller. I'm Chair of the City of Bratton Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'm calling our meeting for February nineteenth, twenty twenty five to order at six thirty one P M. First item on our agenda is roll call. So I am here, Ms. Bergeron is here, Mr. Boris is here, Mr. James is here, Mr. Jenkins is not here, Mrs. Lotrop is here, and Mr. Russ is here. So we have a quorum, six commissioners in attendance. Next item on our agenda is approval of the Planning and Zoning Meeting Minutes from January twenty second, twenty twenty five. Should we approve?
Approve.
Motion from Mr. Russ. Second from Mr. Boris. Anybody have any changes or?
No, I, I, I thought they were concise and they, uh, I like the way you politicized the, uh, the comments and um, I think everybody was captured. The, my only comment would be that there, there may have been a couple of like house numbers missing from, you know, where you caught the street but not the house number. So if anybody has a hard spot between that, we could, we could approve with, uh, you know, with updated house numbers and something. I don't, I don't know if it was great.
Alright, so anybody else got any comments or changes? Alright, all those in the chair of approving the minutes as submitted, you say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Extinctions, right? Minutes are approved, six zero zero. Alright, um, next item on our agenda is public hearing for site plan number five zero three, special permit number four seven five, K can number three three seven. This is Electric Boat, care of Lor- Lorero Engineering Associates. It's at seventy five Eastern Point Road. It's a boatyard for building, store, area selling or servicing boats. We still don't, we're still waiting for the report from the city's consultant engineer, correct? So we don't, we don't have that yet. So we're, uh, gonna continue that, uh, public hearing on the eighteenth of March twenty, twenty twenty five. Do we need a, do we need a motion and a vote on that, or you can just do it?
Um, it's actually. It's, it is fine that the client there, the ones who actually suggested it, so, um, they requested it, so you can, I think, I mean, you can vote on brand.
Just move forward, okay? That's fine. Alright, the next public hearing is for text amendment to the P O C D number zero one dash twenty five. This was, uh, to amend the plan of conservation and development, uh, submitted by the Planning and Economic Development Department of the City of Bratton. So I'll open that public hearing and I'll read the public hearing procedure. Good evening, I am Paul Concomiller, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I would like to open the public hearing for text amendment P O C D number zero one dash twenty five. It's an amendment to the Plan of Conservation and Development submitted by the Planning and Zoning, Planning and Economic Development Department of the City of Bratton. Purpose of this public hearing is for the commission to receive input from the applicant, proponents, opponents, and all interested parties or citizens who wish to comment on the aforementioned application. It is important to note that once this application was received by the commission, no member of the commission may comment on or discuss this application with any other member of the commission, the applicant, applicant's agent, member of the public, or interested party, except during the public hearing proceedings. Once the hearing is closed, commission members may only discuss this application with commission members during deliberations. Hearing is being recorded and minutes are being documented. Anyone wishing to speak shall do so from the microphone. Please state your name clearly, spelling your last name for the record, and provide your address. Please speak slowly into the microphone and reintroduce yourself each time you speak. The commission uses the following procedure during public hearings. Each hearing will be introduced and the legal notice read. The applicant or designated agent will present the application. The commission and staff have the opportunity to ask questions or provide comments. The applicant will then have the opportunity to address staff and commission questions and comments. The chair will then ask for public comments in the following order. Comments in favor of the application. Comments in opposition to the application. Comments that are either in favor or opposition of the application. Any questions to the applicant, staff, or commission shall be addressed through the chair. The chair will pose the question or questions to the appropriate party or parties. Please limit public comments to how the application does or does not comply with land use regulations for the Plan of Conservation and Development. The applicant will then have the opportunity to address public comments and questions. The commission and staff will be provided further opportunity to ask additional questions and offer further comments. These may be directed to the applicant or a member of the public who previously commented or submitted information for the record. The applicant and members of the public will have one opportunity to respond to commission and staff questions or comments. The commission will then decide whether to close or continue the public hearing to a future date. Once the hearing is closed, the commission is unable to hear additional comments or accept exhibits of correspondence in favor, opposition, or with a neutral position of the application. The commission will then deliberate upon the application. Deliberations will occur in a meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Deliberations will be posted on a meeting agenda, and the public is welcome to listen to the commission's discussions. Agendas are posted a minimum, a minimum of twenty four hours in advance of a regular or special meeting of commission and are provided on the city's website and at the city clerk's office. During deliberations, commission members will discuss the application and input from staff. Commission are prudent to consider a racial role and testimony and information provided by the applicant and members of the public. Following deliberations, the commission will then vote on the application. Four outcomes could be to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or deny with prejudice. Are there any questions regarding these procedures before I open the public hearing? Okay, I don't see any. For the record, I'll read the legal notice and provide the dates of publication. City of Bratton Planning and Zoning Commission, notice of hearing. Bratton City Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on February nineteenth, twenty twenty five at six thirty P M. Bratton Municipal Building, two ninety five Meridian Street. Here, possibly act on the following matter. Text amendment B O C D number zero one dash two five, planning submitted by Planning and Economic Development Department of the City of Bratton to amend the Plan of Conservation and Development. Is interested parties and is interested persons may be heard and written communications relative to the above matter will be sent via email to the City of Bratton City Clerk and to City of Bratton Planner by twelve noon on February nineteenth, twenty twenty five. The time and location will be on the agenda, on the city calendar, on the city website. Application is on file and may be viewed via email, viewed on the City of Bratton website, Public Notices, Planning, Zoning, and Applications, twenty twenty five, and at the City Clerk's Office, two ninety five Meridian Street, Bratton, Connecticut. Dated the fifth to twelfth days of February, twenty twenty five. Alright, the public hearing for T A P O C D number zero one dash twenty five is now opened, and I the applicant is Sierra Patrick, you're speaking for the
Yes.
Application, correct?
It's a good evening, um, commissioners, um, I'm Sierra Patrick, I'm the Economic Development Manager for the City of Bratton. And tonight I'm joined by Noah, who will take himself shortly um, to give you an update of all the resiliency work that has been done today, and then ultimately requesting that we update the P O C D to reflect um, the community resiliency plan and work then thus far, um, to kind of keep track of this process. Um, this amendment is only to section six of the P O C D. Um, the part of addressing community issues, um, and so tonight we'll give you an overview what that amendment is. We'll talk about the climate risk science. We'll go into overview of the plan and then we'll do a little bit more of the recommendations. Um, but before we get to that, we want to introduce.
Sure. Hi, thank you, uh, for having me today. Good to be here. Uh, my name's Noah Slovan. I plus I need to be there. Uh, my name's Noah Slovan. I'm a climate resilience planner with S L R Consulting. Um, and we started working with the city to have this climate resilience plan in, in twenty twenty. Um, and, um, enjoyed working through that process with all of you and continuing to be involved with integration and implementation since then, uh, and I'll come back to me after Sierra talks a little bit and goes into some of the background of that specific project.
Alright, so the Plan of Conservation Development is the amendment again to section six. Um, and ultimately, we want to adopt the twenty twenty two, um, Community Resiliency Plan into our twenty nineteen Plan of Conservation and Development. There are multiple strategies that are highlighted within the P O C D. Um, so there are some proposed updates to that. Um, the first of which is to actually establish a municipal, municipal responsibilities and to designate a resiliency coordinator. Um, we do not have a designated person focused on resiliency. It is currently a split task of mine, so doing half economic and community development, half resiliency, um. That's been a great process, but for what the city needs to do moving forward, um, they should, we should consider actually having a dedicated person to that. Um, focused on resiliency. Um, also in twenty nineteen, we did establish a working, um, group that, um, was supposed to help with the development of the Community Resiliency Plan. Covid kind of threw a little bit of a kink in that to gather people around, so that was something that was executed under staff. But we do see the value in having that, um, community, um, group there, so we want to reestablish it and actually, um, reevaluate the roles of that committee. So that committee would be focused on, um, really evaluating the community vulnerabilities, um, developing projects, helping with grant writing and administration supports, and just overall project renovation, um, for specifics. Uh, this group should include municipal staff and key personnel, um, within the City of Bratton, as well as in NGOs and residential businesses that are willing to, um, participate. The other strategies within the plan, um, were to conduct a thorough assessment of vulnerabilities to climate change, to sea level rise, including detailed match on areas subject to potential inundation in the future. Um, now we'll go into more detail of that plan. Um, and also to create an action plan that prioritizes, um, the objectives that we need to do moving forward. Both of those tasks are completed within our work with the Community Resiliency Plan, and so Noah will be going into that in a little bit more detail. We are now at the stage where we want to start to address those objectives and recommendations of the plan. Um, so that we can start to become more of a resilient community. A few other strategies, um, within the P O C D is to incorporate climate change into municipal planning and operations. Um, through this last five year process, we have been kind of doing that, uh, through our capacity building work, through developing this plan, but more work is need to be done, more conversation, um, to be had about how we actually move this, um, resiliency discussion forward. Um, we also say to continue to work with regional, state, and federal agencies and other organizations to address coastal vulnerability. Resiliency is very broad. Some of these projects are very large, and it's going to take more than what's municipal staff to execute things. So those partnerships are critical for us to move forward, and so we definitely encourage those to continue. Um, and then to pursue grant funding, um, to help us develop these plans and concepts more. And then for you guys really coming to the, um, equation is to consider increasing regulatory standards, um, about how we develop within some of the vulnerable areas. And so I'll pass back to Noah, we'll be a little bit more into the science.
Thanks, Sierra. Uh, so I'll start with a, a general high level overview, just basically why is this important? You know, like, what is, uh, what is climate risk? What is climate change? And, and why is it worth playing for? So climate change is defined as a long-term shift in temperatures and weather patterns. Uh, it is an anthropogenic hazard. Humans, uh, human activities, uh, emit fossil fuels and, um, greenhouse gases into the atmosphere as a byproduct of various things that we do. Um, but those greenhouse gases, uh, create the greenhouse effect where, uh, solar radiation from the sun um, is absorbed by the earth, radiated back out, and some of that gets trapped. So, uh, that causes the warming of the planet, uh, which leads to those changes in temperatures and weather patterns. There are three specific, uh, outcomes of this that we're really focused on, um, in the City of Bratton. So, uh, I'm gonna share some projections. All of these are in some way tied back to the Connecticut Institute for Resilience and Climate Adaptation, or CERCUP. Uh, so they have developed these projections for local sea level rise, um, as sea levels around the world change. Uh, they've looked at various kind of downscale, regionalized projections for what is expected to happen. Um, and on the right, you can see that, uh, there, there's kind of a few different projections that they have established as the, the state of Connecticut has established a planning threshold of half a meter or about twenty inches of sea level rise by twenty fifty. Um, we're, we're halfway there. They, they start, actually, I think it's, uh, nineteen ninety one is like the baseline for that sea level rise. Um, so that's something that's been observed to be increasing and expected to continue to increase. Um, half a, half a, half a meter, twenty inches doesn't necessarily sound like that much. Um, but those small changes have a significant impact, not necessarily on the extent of flooding, especially in a place like the City of Bratton, where it's, it's actually relatively steep, um, along the shoreline in most areas, but, uh, significant impact on frequency. So because that baseline is a little bit higher, uh, a ten-year event turns into a two-year event by twenty fifty. A hundred-year event turns into a ten-year event. Um, so that's kind of another way to think about that exposure increasing. Precipitation, uh, is a little bit more variable, but, uh, on an annual basis, the average precipitation is expected to increase about eight percent, four inches a year from like a forty eight inches to, um, I guess fifty two inches. Um, I don't know the exact numbers, but that's, you know, an average around there. Um, but the bigger impacts are seen on the magnitude of the extreme events, where, uh, maximum one-day precipitation increases by about twenty-five percent from, uh, kind of modern current day, um, maximum one-day precipitation, and then the number of days we have more than one inch of precipitation uh, rise from, from twelve to fourteen. So more severe and more frequent, um, heavy, heavy rainfall. Temperature is the most, uh, kind of obvious and extreme, um, trend that we see. Uh, by twenty fifty, average temperatures are expected to increase by five degrees in Connecticut. Um, and the, that kind of translates into, uh, an average of five degrees translates into days that are over ninety degrees, increased from five on an annual basis to twenty-five. Um, days with a low of sixty-eight degrees goes from ten up to forty, which can have really significant paths on cooling, capacity on the grid, and on, uh, public health. So, um, we want to be resilient to that. Uh, the city has defined resilience, um, kind of in line with a lot of other definitions. The ability to recover or adapt from a significant event caused by the forces of nature or human action. Um, you'll note that climate is actually not part of the definition of resilience. It's really just, uh, being able to recover and adapt from disruption. That could be acute or long-term changes. Uh, and I do think it's important and worth noting that the building resilience to climate change impacts, uh, is the same as building resilience to anything. Um, although it is focused on kind of natural disasters, but resilience is resilience and, and worth pursuing, uh, for a variety of reasons. And when we're thinking about resilience, uh, community resilience, we're not just thinking about kind of built infrastructure, you know, how do you protect a road, how to protect a building? It's the whole, uh, the whole community, all of the different sectors that make up quality of life and, and why people like to live in this city. Thinking about how climate change impacts all of those different sectors and how to make each sector resilient. A quick kind of note of clarification, uh, people talk about climate change resilience, which is adapting to the impacts of climate change. Uh, that is different than climate change mitigation, uh, which is trying to prevent climate change happening by reducing uh, greenhouse gas emissions, um, you know, uh, other reducing absor- absor- absorption, uh, reducing absorption, uh, of radiation. Uh, but there's overlap there. We like to think about co-benefits. Um, a lot of resilience activities also will help reduce emissions and vice versa. So, um, I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail now about the key hazards that we found here, which are, um, stormwater flooding and urban heat island effect. Um, how they happen and how we can, uh, adapt to them. So, um, so, uh, stormwater is generated when rain falls on an area and, um, under kind of an undeveloped scenario, that rain will be, uh, will, will trickle down into the soil or be taken up by plants. I realize this is gonna play itself. I apologize for that. Um, I'll see if I can go back with this. It's okay. Okay, so, uh, you know, pervious surfaces, surfaces that are not paved or not, uh, built on, water can, um, filtrate into the ground and vegetation takes up water and holds the water in the vegetation and also, um, uh, transpires that water into the air, and that's mostly what happens to water. You don't get a lot of, uh, overland flow in, um, in natural habitats. But as you get impervious surfaces and development, uh, the water runs off more quickly. It goes into underground drainage systems. Um, it, it, uh, gathers more rapidly, um, and then can overwhelm systems and also carry pollutants and things like that. Here in the City of Brian, we also have a compounding factor of being on the coast, and all of your drainage has to be able to leave the city and go into, uh, into the ocean, into the, the sound or, or the, um, things. So, um, if sea levels are high, and that can be temporarily during a coastal storm or in the future as sea levels rise, uh, it, it puts a limit on how low, you know, it, it increases the height of that, um, low outlet, that base level, and so that can prevent floodwater, uh, stormwater from escaping and draining effectively. Um, and in worst case scenario, can actually, your drainage systems can allow seawater to flood inland areas. So the two main, uh, categories of adaptation in terms of stormwater, stormwater is you want to slow the flow of water, so it's not all, um, piling up and overwhelming drainage systems. Um, and increasing vegetation, which is similar to slowing the flow, but really, you know, it, it provides another outlet for vegetation, uh, for the water by transpiring it and, and holding on to it. And so there's a, a range of different types of adaptation strategies that accomplish this, uh, things like rain barrels that collect water that then you can use to water your garden later, uh, stormwater cisterns that can be underground and hold really large quantities of water, and then that water can be used later or just be let, allowed to drain later more slowly. Rain gardens, uh, retention retention basins that hold water, you know, above ground, uh, kind of fit into the landscape. Um, and then with, with buildings, you can add, uh, green roofs that, um, put vegetation on the roof and allow the, the water to, um, be taken up by that vegetation and, and slow that flow. Blue roofs where you just kind of hold the water on the roof temporarily. And in terms of coastal flood adaptation, uh, you can either keep the water out or get the water out. Uh, you can have these kinds of tidal valves that close when sea levels tie, uh, rise. That's on the top right there. So that water is not able to flow, um, in from the ocean into your drainage system, and then you can pump stormwater to get it out. Uh, sorry, you can pump stormwater or you can pump the coastal water. So that's a quick overview of the, the flood issues that we were thinking about. Urban heat is the other challenge. Urban heat islands, uh, is, is defined as, uh, areas where the temperature is higher in areas that are highly developed. Um, and just to note that the difference tends to be even more pronounced at night. Uh, so when we're thinking about those nights that don't drop below sixty-eight degrees, that can be a real problem in urban areas. The contributing factors to that are, uh, all of the pavement and building materials and building roofs can, uh, be dark, and that absorbs more solar radiation and heats up the immediate area. Uh, a lack of vegetation, vegetation, uh, helps cool areas by providing shade and through, uh, transpiration and chemical reactions of that water that I don't fully understand. Uh, human activities, uh, you know, driving around, creating those localized emissions can trap heat. Um, and then building materials and the presence of buildings that can prevent airflow through an area. And those impact the community, um, by impacting public health, uh, requiring more energy used to cool areas, and they tend to have, uh, uh, more impacts disproportionate impacts on environmental justice communities, um, based because of the, the kind of nature of how we've developed and, um, the, the needs of those communities both. So, um, there are a range of adaptation strategies for that. They overlap conveniently a lot with the stormwater strategies. Um, thinking about green infrastructure and vegetation, uh, thinking about airflow through an area, the materials that are used to build uh, different structures. We liked this, uh, animation, but it's a little bit fast, so I'm not gonna sit it for too long. Um, but basically, blue and green infrastructure, uh, so thinking about open space where people can go and be away from buildings and, uh, traffic and paved areas, um, having trees where people can get shade, reading roofs, uh, to reduce the absorption of heat by roofs of buildings, by, as well as rain gardens, all of that green infrastructure. Um, anything that helps infiltrate water because that also brings the heat that the water captures into the ground. Uh, water bodies themselves can allow, can, can, um, that water can absorb heat from the air and reduce the urban heat impact. Uh, but also people can go in the water. The splash bath pools allow people to cool off. Fountains have, um, an added benefit of kind of encouraging, uh, airflow in the immediate area. And something we're missing on here actually is not even, is kind of hard infrastructure. Um, can create shade, uh, structures that provide, um, shade that don't provide a necessarily like a environmental or green benefit, but they still can, uh, create areas for shade. Uh, and then designing buildings to be cooler, um, to promote passive cooling and allow airflow through the buildings and around the buildings. Uh, and then education, um, cooling centers, having places where people can go, um, during extreme heat events to recover. So, uh, that's the big overview of, uh, the, the basic science behind the study and the planning that we did. Um, I, I do have a clock up there, so I can make sure I don't be long for too much longer. Um, but now I'll just present the actual, you know, what did we do with this planning project? So, uh, it was a, uh, kind of few phases of the project. We reviewed existing studies and reports that, uh, the city had done or had been done by the region or any state, uh, to understand and build off of the work that had already been accomplished. We did a lot of public and stakeholder engagement to understand how, uh, residents are impacted by climate change and how, what types of adaptation options and resilience options are of interest. Uh, we did a vulnerability and risk assessment. We identified and prioritized strategies and then prepared a comprehensive report. When we were looking at risk, we looked at flooding, coastal flooding specifically. We looked at stormwater flooding separately from coastal flooding, urban heat as discussed. Um, and we did also look at erosion risk and how that can be compounded by sea level rise and changes to precipitation and found that it's a big risk. So I'm actually not gonna talk about it anymore. Um, and because of how Zoom works, you can't really see the bottom here, there we go, um, I think, obviously they can't. Um, we looked at the impacts of those different hazards on the community. And when we were defining the community, the sectors we looked at were, um, social, you know, how, looking specifically at how socially vulnerable. Communities were impacted by these hazards. We looked at residential properties, commercial properties, uh, to understand. And residential and commercial sectors, critical infrastruc- critical facilities and infrastructure and utilities. Other community resources, schools, churches, things like that, and then natural systems. There we go. So the way that we visualize that, um, that you can visualize this, we actually split the city into different neighborhoods. And then looked at maps of those different hazards and magnitude of those hazards and exposure in the future with climate change projections. Uh, and then the presence of each of those different, um, sectors, each of those different vulnerability categories and intersected them. So this is the five, the the neighborhood defined as five corners neighborhood in the plan. And you can see flooding and erosion are not concerns because there is not any exposure to coastal flooding or erosion in that neighborhood. As defined, it's a little bit hard to see on here, but it's kind of east of electric boat, um, and and that the town, city center. Um, stormwater was, uh, high risk in terms of its impact on. Uh, social, uh, the social sector, commercial properties, uh, critical infrastructure. Um, but there weren't many community facilities that we saw at risk, so it was low vulnerability for community, uh, resources. And then we have an overall risk both by category and by hazard. Uh, so we did that across the entire city. And, um, kind of got these, uh, risk, um, quantification. Or or risk, uh, risk levels by vulnerability category, by hazard and by neighborhood. And we can really compare all these different things between the different neighborhoods, sectors and hazards. We, uh, summarized all of our results, I'll just keep looking at this. Um, the the key challenges and concerns that we identified were stormwater flooding and impervious surfaces at the top. Severe heat and lack of shade, second to the top. Um, and then we're also concerned about local business risks from, uh, climate change. Flooding along the south shore, vulnerable roadways and, uh, and transportation network in terms of flooding, also mostly on the the south shore. And then the exposure of vulnerable, vulnerable populations to, um, all of these hazards. Those six, uh, key risks, uh, we then turned into six key resilience objectives. And then we added a seventh resilience objective, which was to improve the resilience of municipal assets there at the bottom. Um, really defined as like a lead by example approach. Um, so those objectives that that connect to each of those different, um, risks that were we identified. Reducing the impacts of stormwater flooding, mitigating extreme heat impacts on residents and visitors. Enhancing resilience of local businesses, creating a flood resilient shoreline, creating a resilient transportation network. And increasing the resilience of socially vulnerable populations. We also, um, as part of that project, developed four resilience concept designs that, um, identified. Uh, you know, a little bit more specific opportunities at specific locations. It took those to, um, uh, an advanced level where we were doing, um. Uh, cost estimates and some visualization of of what those projects could look like. So that they're more ready to be enacted and be funded. So those were looking at planting, uh, trees around Washington Park. Doing a shoreline resilience project along the shore of in a specific location. And we actually kind of expanded that concept to include like a a whole shore and area resilience approach. Um, installing some rain gardens on city properties and then looking at the possibility. Of creating a resilience, uh, public path, um, along, uh, the river.
It's the first thing that has been talked about for, um, a while, but adding some resilience components to that and expanding that up to Washington Park.
Okay, that's me.
And, um, just to add, um, the plan is available online. And so within the plan in chapter four is going to highlight all of the objectives and then it provides a suite of recommendations. Within their like action items and any objective that we were looking to, um, address and kind of gives us a process of. You know, do this first and then come back and 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 address these. So, um, to talk about project progress to date, um, with stormwater being one of the highest objectives that we need to relate to. And five corners, as you guys saw by the max being a high priority, um, we started to, um. We thought it was important to do a stormwater assessment of the five corners neighborhood. That will help us figure out other improvements that would be needed. Within that stormwater assessment, we are looking at. Assessing the actual infrastructure you currently have, but then also seeing where are there places that we can plant trees or bioswells. Or other things that kind of help, um, keep the water out of the system or prevent it from going into the system. But then also addressing the urban heat within that neighborhood, as you know, it is like a sea of parking lots within the five corners neighborhood. So it makes that neighborhood very, um, very hot. Um, we were able to successfully partner with the nature conservancy on this project. And we were, um, able to get an award from the Long Island Sound Future Fund for, um, about three hundred and sixty K. Um, to actually do this work. So we have, um, consultants on board, um. Nature Conservancy is leading the project, Bussin O'Neill is the consultant. And so over the next couple of years, we will be having those individuals come back, um, to work with the community and continue to work with staff. Um, some of our capacity building work that we did last year brought those groups into work internally with staff. So we can actually develop these projects for the proposals that we were awarded. Um, so these are some images of kind of why we definitely need to start to look at this area. This is, um, sheet flow that is was observed, uh, one coming down from the Hamilton, um, staircases that are over there. And then at the end of, um, John Street, you can kind of see, um, the. The bubbler, thank you, um, effect happening there. Um, we also planted some rain gardens in twenty twenty, um, last year. We planted one at Washington Park. It is right at the end of Friswall, um, and there was sheet flow that was observed. Flowing from, it's like the end of a cul-de-sac and then it goes into the park. There was sheet flow observed coming from that area and then draining kind of all down, um, through Washington Park. And you know, it's just a hill and there's a playscape that's at the top. So any of the mulch and debris stuff that was there was actually getting washed away down to the, um, bottom of the park. This installation will kind of help mitigate that. And there are also some other, um, Think Bigger Cold. Um, Eastern Conservation Commission is actually working with Parks and Recs to do some sidewalk improvements. Leading to, um, the tennis courts under there and it is, um. I'm like this course name, but that can help absorb the water. Um, and then we're also going to see if there are other opportunities for rain gardens within Washington Park to kind of help with stormwater and flows of that nature. Um, but successfully we're able to do roughly about, uh, a thousand square feet of rain gardens in twenty twenty-four. Um, the con- one of the concept plans that came from the community Z C plan. Was to do rain gardens at the municipal building. So it's about two thousand square feet of rain gardens right out in front of our parking lot area here to help us, um, get that stormwater. We were able to, um, successfully apply and was awarded, um, Connecticut Deep's Urban Green Community Gardens. Funding to implement this, um, so we are working with the, um, Eastern Conservation District to plan and design everything. And our public works department is gonna do all the excavation work, um, to get these going and we're hoping to have them installed by May. So stay tuned if you would like to participate in that activity. Um, a couple of other initiatives that are going on, so, um, we applied for a FEMA. Right, direct technical assistance program. It is a three-year program. We get to work with, um. A cons- a consultant to develop projects for FEMA funding. So this, um, we actually just got our contract signed. It's, um, kind of off to the hills, um, as of this month. And so we will be reviewing our hazard mitigation plan, which was updated in twenty twenty-three. Along with our community residency plan to see exactly which projects are in the pipeline or who to be within that pipeline to go before this team. So they can start to develop proposals for us for that federal funding. Um, another initiative that is going on right now is, um, the Connecticut Coastal Hazard Analysis Modeling, um, Predictions. So basically, this is an online database that is going to be set up to monitor when, um, storm, wind waves and storm surge events. And it compares it to our, um, critical infrastructure and our managers at these facilities. To understand or to better predict how storm events are actually going to impact us so that they can plan ahead. Or any adjustments or, um, things that need to be done and and. In preparation for these things and it also helps for long-term planning for critical infrastructure. Um, so this is something that is being done by Connecticut, um, deep in partnership with the University of Rhode Island. And it is between Sonyton, London and Groton, um, they have a steering committee that's coming together. And they're at the process now where they're doing the, um, site assessments and visits. So our PAF system, um, on Thane Street is one of the key ones that we want to have over the next, so get on board. And, um, are going to be a part of this process along with a few others. We also have a program, um, Heat Smart Drive. It is to help rotten residents learn, um, kind of go through three stages to be more energy efficient. So you can get a home energy, um, home efficiency assessment. You can also get insulation work done and then do more, um, further consideration for considering a heat pump. Uh, we do have a workshop coming up on March thirteenth to just highlight all of the insulation work. And, um, this is a partnership between the city, the town, Groton Utilities, Lantern and Pace People's Choice. Um, sorry, Africans forgetting that, but, um, really good program. We've had a lot of, um, residents participate in it. I encourage you to continue to, um, be a part of it. This program does run until the end of this year, um, so definitely reach out if you want to learn more. Um, another initiative, so, um, Bigger Cold Watershed is a committee, um, that really focuses on bigger for watershed. But does other initiatives throughout the community. They are, um, going to be doing a part cleanup of the Birch Plain Creek area on April eleventh at nine AM. So if you would like to participate in that, um, please, well, there's a QR code on here where you can register. But, um, there are flyers and things that are going out and also there are news, uh, letters so you can get connected to the group. Uh, also, um, with the big, um, backwet committee, we also did a think at the same campaign. So it is a resident campaign about, um, reducing fats, rags, oils and grease into our sewer system. It's kind of being mindful of what you put down in the drain and how that actually has impact on our systems and ways that we can prevent those backups. Um, we were able to do an onsite. Demon- like presentation and demonstration at Bryan State's last October. Um, we are looking to partner with other, um, multifamily residential units to kind of help with that education piece. And also see if there are ways that we can collaborate with them on including stormwater, um, on their sites. Another, um, pretty cool initiative is Connecticut NER is launching their My Coast Coastal Monitoring, um, tool. Is basically going to be a database where community members can take pictures of the flooding events. And things that are going on and upload it and then kind of all just generate some feeds into the system. So that they can better monitor and plan for, um, flooding events in the future. Um, they will be having a webinar on the program on April tenth. Um, and there'll be more information out there for those who would like to be involved in that as well. A lots of activity of resilience, a lot of different initiatives, um, whether it's infrastructure or kind of social, um, more social services. But, um, more work to be underway, but we just really wanted to take this opportunity and at least, um, update the P O C D of where we are at now. Um, you guys have another five years before the whole full P O C D does need to be updated, but at least you have, um. A pulse on where we're at with these things to date.
Thank, thank you. Um, questions or comments from commissioners?
Where's the March thirteenth function that will be held? Oh, it will be held here in House of Chambers. I do have a letter from the Congress about, uh, I think, don't you see that? Yeah. And I also hope it's, um. If I shouldn't mention, so this, this was referred to from the council with a resolution. Um, resolution of the mayor council refer the com- twenty twenty-two community resilience plan. For adoption by referencing to the city's plan of conservation and development, and that was, um. Resolution twenty-four dash six dash one hundred.
Questions and comments from commissioners? I, I, I guess I would just point out that there are. A handful of amendments to the text in the Plan of Conservation and Development right there will be the result of. The work that you've done on resilience. Do we need to, should we walk through those at this point? Or, you know, I, I think those those changes have been distributed to members of the commission, but I don't know if they've been, they've been published to the public.
They're available online, um. I think, I think the general summary for getting them adopted, it's a document that we'll be using. Um, and it's basically adding the report as, um. It's, it's sort of like another chapter to the P O C D. So it's a, it's an integrated, physically they're, right now they're two separate governments, but they're, um, integrated by. By the adoption of it as an amendment to the P O C D by R A B.
So it's, so it's, so in reviewing the, the changes, I mean, it's largely adding some additional detail to the, to what's already exists in the P O C D. That, I mean, that's, that's, that's my take on having kind of looked at them. Um, and then in some cases, we've, um, changes and we're sort of leading the, the effort on that certain activities. Um, there were, there were a couple of changes there, um, that's, you know, but it's fairly straightforward. And, and, you know, less than your description of just integrating the results of the residency study into the P O C D. So, you know, pretty good way to describe what's being proposed is the text of that. Um, anything else, commissioners, questions, comments? I guess.
Only, only to wonder what the role is of planning and zoning commission. It sounds like council's already adopted this, a resolution?
No, it's actually, um, the P O C D is actually your document. The council, um, offers a referral positive or negative. Um, but it's, it's almost like a reverse process of the twenty-fourth, um. But state law, uh, says it's, P O C D is the document of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So it's a view that needs to amend the document. And that's what.
The P U, the P O C D, uh, falls under the Economic Development Commission or into the city's. Falls under the Economic Development Commission or into the city's website. Let's see how you get to it.
That may be how you can get to the document, but that's not who has the. Legislative. Oversight and responsibility for the P S C D. P S C D is a planning document. And it falls under the planning zoning commission. Um, and. Again, that's why you all are involved, will be involved in the writing of it. The editing, you know, what changes get made. It's required every ten years and um. The state can hold up your transportation money in particular.
Yeah, I mean, I understand. I understand that this commission. Uses it. Uh, I guess I guess maybe my my question or criticism is how you get to that information. On the city website. It's it's not, you can't get to the document itself. At least I couldn't from the mobile phone. Um, you could get to images that are excerpts from it, but uh as in you can't get to it uh in like PDF format or something.
And this is the P O C D you can't get to. I hear that was trying to.
Just for my own, you know, confirmation, I wanted to, I wanted to see the bottom line that who signed off and that wasn't. It wasn't easily obtained in my quick search.
All right, um, I guess we'll open up to public comments and plus you shares of anything else? All right, any members of the public who wish to speak in favor of the text amendment? Go forward. Anyone? Anyone on Zoom? Anyone on Zoom wish to speak?
Ear, I have earbar, earbar. I'm pronouncing correctly. You can unmute yourself if that was the hand that was raised.
Anyone on Zoom wish to speak? If if you do, please raise your hand on on Zoom.
I don't know how to raise my hand necessarily. Um. Yeah, so so I spoke with a couple of you of you today and I don't know if this is the right time to talk about it, but um. Yeah, so I'm. Yeah, my name is Ryan Berry. Uh, I live on on Jupiter Point Road um in Groton. And uh, so in addition to the resiliency planning, I actually had questions about. Uh, there is grants for from FEMA um from the flood mitigation assistance. Uh, grant program that they have for things like raising houses uh in. In low areas near the near the water and being a homeowner uh in one of those areas and obviously with the. Raising or rising uh seawaters over time, like. I wonder and uh am interested in understanding if the city of Groton is looking into. Utilizing those grant programs uh for homeowners in the area.
So the city of Groton um. Is interested to explore different opportunities that residents can make to make improvements to their homes. This specific FEMA program. It's something that the city would have to collaborate with the town of Groton on. Um, it is a competitive process, grant process for us to get through. Um, but it would need to be a partnership and then the money will kind of trickle down and open up to all of Groton. Um, that is something that has been kind of floated as an idea um for this um brought in to pursue. And so. I think that is something that we can need to keep on our list of things to move forward with. And even with our FEMA direct technical assistance, this could be something that is on the project list um for them to also explore this a little bit right there.
But just just to be clear, at this time, all we're seeking is public comment in favor of. The plant, the planning and zoning commission adopting uh this resilience plan into the plan of conservation and development.
That that that's correct. But thank you for your comment. Anybody anybody else on Zoom wish to speak? All right, anybody in the, anybody here in the in the room? Yes, sir?
Uh, no, I'm not planning on TV. I'm just here to for education. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
I I don't have a comment as far as in favor of, just for general useful. But. Name it, name and address. Uh, Brian Neiman, M I E, M A N H, seventy six Allen Street. Uh, I'm. Retired from the Public Works Department for twenty years there. So I'm. Quite familiar with coastal flooding, uh storm drain flooding. And all the nooks and crannies that I have personally been in. Uh, I'm not familiar. With the collaborative. But I would hope that there is some kind of liaison between this body. Similar in the town and the state. Primarily because of. While not physically in the city, two of the main arteries into and out of the city, Thomas Road. And the Quonix Road down by Sneakers is prone to prone to regular tidal and storm flooding. Which creates a safety problem if for heaven forbid, there should have to be any kind of evacuation, particularly from the southern part of the city. So I hope that. That aspect is maintained in any changes. Uh, going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Any other questions or comments for commissioners? On the on the proposed changes to the plan of conservation and development. All right, so. Any, so um. They're motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Miss Bergeron, second by Mr. Boris. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstentions. Okay. Public hearing is closed. Six zero zero. All right, thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. And the next item in our agenda is a possible deliberation and possible vote on the application. From the public hearing, which will be the changes to the plan of conservation and development in this case. For the uh, this would be um text amendment P O C D number zero one dash twenty five. Us from commissioners, I mean. Do you have any? Think they'd like to. Say positive, negative?
Boris, go ahead. I think it's pretty straightforward, great presentation and I don't find anything controversial about. Sustainability, so.
Yeah, I mean, just just for uh um sake of cover the details, you know, the the plan of conservation and development. Is a tool that planning and zoning commission uses uh to steer regulation changes. Um, this update to the P O C D uh makes suggestions. That that don't themselves instantly become regulation changes. And for example, there's the recommendation to have a designated resilience coordinator. Doesn't mean that the plan of the the planning and zoning commission is is prescribing uh. You know, a new job description for the city. That that is a decision, you know, budget that the mayor council has to decide, but. Our our adoption of an amendment to the P O C D uh, you know, would would uh enhance the recommendation for. Such a designation or creative position that they decide to do that.
Thank you. Other comments from commissioners? All right, is there a motion to approve the uh text amendment? Repeat to P O C D number zero one dash twenty five, motion for Mr. Boris. Second by. Mr. Russ. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of approving text amendment to the P O C D number zero one dash twenty five, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstentions. It's approved. Six zero zero. Thank you. All right, um, next. Item on our agenda is discussion of possible zoning regulation and then so that's a little bit. Something you like to bring up there.
Um, well, as we had talked about, there has been. An appeal of the decision that was unanimously unanimous approval of the amendment to. These text amendment to the zoning regulations and to the map. With that, I would recommend that any. More public comment and um. In comparison with uh. Who haven't go to executive session. Uh, those are those who are on uh. On the Zoom, um, we will keep our turning on, but everyone else will. Will be released.
All right. So that's the next item on our agenda is the uh executive session. So I need a motion. To move into executive session pursuant to Connecticut general statutes one dash two hundred six B. To discuss pending litigation concerning the complaint administrative appeal of the city of Groton planning and zoning commission decision. Approving zoning text amendment application number zero four dash twenty four and zoning map amendment application. Number zero two dash twenty four. This was filed in New London Superior Court on five February twenty twenty five. And we had also the motion to include city planner Leslie Crean and city attorney Brian LeClark in the executive session. All right, it's a motion by Mr. James. Second by Mrs. Watson. All right. Yeah, and any, any just.
Vote first and then deliver.
Yeah, yeah. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor going into executive session is proposed, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstentions. All right, executive session is approved, six zero zero. Okay.
You should shut the recording off too. Uh, we have a moment.